It's 6:00 PM. I'll call this meeting the county council order. Thank you for the drive to the floor.
By allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Here, look here, sir. Richard Tren, Ryan Guinness, Rosen, Dale Seaman, there, Mike Stott.
Here. Move back to the reading of amendments and approval. Amendment on March 4th, 2019 has been presented before approval. Are there any additions, protections, deletions, or amendments we made to this set of amendments? Is there much to be approved? Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Close. Unless you carry some. Move back to the department reports.
All right. Our reports is all we got by now. The new garage should be operational in the next couple of weeks. It's after the move over out there is a lot of them. They installed with radios and all they put in the markings. They've already been placed on their car. It looks like a bad couple of pages of our report. Let's see what the markings actually look like. So that should be ready for the next couple of weeks easy. This last month, we drove 4,921 miles, made calls for rest, 263 calls for service, 28 incident reports, 59 medical stops, 19 citations, and 14 written warnings. Our actual reports, we had five architaphesis, three, and two manual licenses. New licenses are attached to the report, long distance, data, calls for services, and the ground is a long ground. So that's all I know. Let's ask some questions. Any questions?
Thank you, Chief. Superintendent Myers?
There you go. As you can see about our four, we took advantage of the nice weather outside and put our beds, did some dirt work, some alleys that were tricked up over winter. Took the soul spreaders out of trucks. And had the air conditioning and the first put into the scout cabin so now the cat is ready to go. So that'll be a nice addition of the cabin and install smelling headlights throughout the season.
Any questions for Superintendent?
I have one comment. One of the flatbeds went past my house today. He was picking up yard sticks and stuff. One of the headlights was out. I just wanted to make you aware of that.
We'll take it with him. And your place does serve tomorrow actually.
And the May 4th, is it, for the spring cleanup?
Yeah, I don't know the date. It's at the first. I got a reminder. Call day and advertise. It's that first weekend in May.
Is there somewhere where the parameters are? What's your pick up on the wall? Something you want to check out?
Yeah, we typically put it in the paper. We don't pick up other materials, appliances, electronics. Carpet, they'll still pick carpet up. Have an annual carpet lengths to tighten together and stuff like that.
Okay. What's that on the trash counter, isn't it, at the bottom?
It's on the trash counter.
Okay, thank you. Any questions, Superintendent Myers?
And we did some spring cleanup of our wellfields and the stone driveways, filled some holes, buried them out. Lay a lot of land down. We had two water leaks last month. We did install a new service uptown on East Main Street. And we pumped 26,670,000 for the month of March. IPC used 20,274,500.
Want to question for Superintendent? Superintendent, if anything? For those who are here at the war works. Disinfectant season started today. Chlorine sulfur dioxide gases. Chloride residual neocoli testing will resume. Drained both clarifiers last month and made needed repairs. Remover obstruction from one of our RAS pumps. Merrill Brothers is still hauling liquid biosolids for the foreseeable future. Completed and sent in the 2018 annual pretreatment report last month. And then we had some sort of maintenance, couple of things on lift sections and booster issue. And that got resolved. Questions? Thanks, Superintendent. So the big bad news last week was that we didn't get Community Crossings funding for Samuel Roy Road from the G Word application. This is the third time we've applied for it. The first time we applied for it in conjunction with other road projects. We were awarded the other projects, but not Samuel Roy. I still need to talk to him and figure out what the best way to proceed is. If they're not going to fund the project ever in the future because it's a complete tear out or if it's just, I think they had $115 million that they awarded this first round. So it could just be, there are other communities that needed it more and received funds in the past. I'm not sure. So I'll reach out to Mercy of the Land, set up an order in the next few weeks to figure out what we need to do to get that project awarded, if we can. Dude should be down at Riley Park. They said they'd be there today. It's due. They'll probably be there in two weeks. But they're supposed to be installing lighting on the backside of the trail through the Trail Security Grant. Okra is, or not Okra, but I can't remember the name of the vendor. It's going to be doing an income survey to put together for an Okra grant for a water project possibly. Also been in conversation with Dumball about the possibility of SRF grantings and funds. Dr. Cursey today, they said they hadn't heard of SRF granting funds in the past. But I should have an update on that later this week or next. And now we're still pursuing the Okra grant, preliminary application. Some sort of paperwork has to be in by May 3rd, I believe. So Cursey is working on that. Paul, do you guys have any questions for me? Could you, if you have anything?
I don't think so.
Councilman Surry, area planning commission?
We rezoned a piece of land on the other side of the Prairie Farm building up on 421 for Vogel and Van Wieland to potentially put in a car wash, laser car wash there. We also voted against increasing a larger setback for pay bills. And that should have went, both of those should have went to the commissioners today.
Any updates on the redevelopment center in industrial zone?
Waiting for Paul Ryder to get back with us.
Any questions for President Pro Tim Surry? Mr. Chakkar, do you have anything to report on the community center?
No, not at this time. I think we're, they explained as far as I know. We had to open out everything. So what you see here is mainly what we done. I still have a couple of flats to put together yet to hang on the wall for all the volunteers and all the people that donated for, to make this possible. Also, this is a camera skirt. I'm going to give him. We're going to make a collage of what the building looked like when we started and what it looks like now. We started with a shell and finished it to completion. And there'll be pictures of guys, different people in here doing different things. Painting, putting windows in, or not putting windows in, but putting doors in and all that kind of stuff. It's for future, so that the people can understand how this building went together and you put it together. You know, with all the volunteers we had.
Fantastic. Any questions for Councilman Chakkar? Councilman Trigger, do you have anything from the EDC you'd like to report?
Uh, no, not this time. We'll try to have a report next meeting.
So the item of business I have for today, for new business, it's opposed ordinance 2019, that's ordered by town. Ordinance for buildings. So the purpose of this, it's a property maintenance code. So the city Delphi, we have the unsafe building code that we adopted in the past. Under the unsafe building code, we can do certain things. So we can issue orders for vacating an unsafe building, sealing the building against intrusion, ordering the extermination of vermin, removal of trash debris, hazardous materials. But we can also order the repair rehabilitation of an unsafe building to bring it into compliance with standards for building condition or maintenance required for human habitation occupancy or use by statute, a rule, or by ordinance. There's other language within the unsafe building code that requires us to have ordinance on the boats to be able to do certain things. One of those would be to seal up a vacant building. We have to have a standard established by ordinance as to how to seal up a vacant building. This kind of all arose, I got a complaint from a resident who's a neighbor that's got broken windows. They've got facial board rotting now. From the street, you can see they have next to you a staircase that's kind of enclosed. But the stairs are shot in the middle. I mean, they're completely broken. He was asking if there's anything that we could do. I called down to Frankfurt and this is how they would proceed. They would write them an order under the unsafe building code stating that it's not maintained to the standard of the ordinances in the city of Frankfurt. And I provided you with their property maintenance code. I don't expect this to pass tonight, but I think it's something worth discussing and parsing through. I know there's quite a bit here and that I didn't give it to you until Friday. Two different versions. One, version A has more stuff in it. Version B doesn't include things about the interior of the structure requiring street numbers on the exterior of the structure, which I really think they should have street numbers on the exterior of structures. How many times police department, fire department goes somewhere and it's not properly marked from the road what the address is. Version B doesn't include guards for basement windows and rules about swimming pools, hot tubs, and spas. So that was the difference between version A and version B. But I just kind of wanted to open the floor for discussion. Hear you guys' thoughts regarding property maintenance standards.
Well, I went through both versions comparing because of course we didn't know what the full differences were in just receiving seven figures for this stuff. I definitely do not think that we should address the interior yet. I think it seems intrusive to me unless, I mean, there has to be a complaint issued. Would more than one person have to agree with this complaint to initiate some action? Or how does it all start?
So we've had it in the past where we've had a report of vermin coming out of the structure. Actually, I think it was the structure right across the street, the old ice locker plant. And at that point, I called the health department and called the state entomologist, who came up and searched for rats and vermin and everything else. I don't know what their procedure is. If it's one complaint, if it's used to be some sort of verified complaint. But that's what they did in that instance. Really, interior of the home would be difficult. Really what I would like to accomplish is things that are obvious from the roadway. We've got garages around the city of Delphi. Roots are caving in, broken windows, no siding. There's just some apparent things that you can see. I'm not trying to get into the nitty gritty. I just kind of copied and pasted most of what they have in their property maintenance code.
Health and safety issue of the community, besides the luck and everything. I mean, it's a pretty standard thing all over. See, there's a big problem with it, you know.
I have to agree. Anything's got to do with health and safety has to come first. I struggle with trying to tell somebody they got to paint their windows seals because they're looking bad. And you tell people to do that, but we all know what their life is right now.
I'm talking about obvious things, yeah.
But you know, staircases falling in the old Pope Dooley building where the front wall was about to cave. That's, that's not just the people, but there, there's people walking through it. So I think the safety and health are important.
Well, someone pointed out to me that, you know, we have certainly other reporting agencies sometimes that, like the health department that you called. So did they carry through?
In that instance, yes. But I would say the health department calls us more ultimately. We call the health department generally for reasons and other nuisance of that sort. They'll give us a call and normally if I didn't, we probably write them a letter and give them my data today.
So when you write letters, do you give feedback pre or is it, right, 10 letters?
I would say 90% of occupied homes become compliant within the timeframe. Normally, we have about five vacant homes each summer. Is that about, like, nearly five that we end up mowing?
Four have been.
We don't get any response from that. Normally those are bank owned, but still in the name of a previous owner. So there's some confusion there. But I'd say 90% or more, we don't get a response just from sending letters.
Whose liability is it if somebody gets hurt on this property, a child or something?
How soon is the property owner?
So do you have a lot of property owners that are out of the area?
Depends on what part of Delphi you're in. And what do you mean by out of the area, I guess?
Out of, that live out of town, maybe even out of state or whatever.
We do have some. I know we have one from Kansas, one from Florida. I wouldn't say we have a lot. Most of the rentals are owned, owners that reside in Carroll County. But there are maybe a handful or more in town that are owned by out of state people.
Well, I think personally, we got a short summary here of what both of the codes are for and everything. Personally, I think that we ought to take and have it, it takes a special meeting. It takes a special meeting to take and sit down and put both these ordinances together and see what one says and see what the other says so they don't duplicate. Because from what I've read and been able to read in both ordinance. And don't get me wrong, I'm not against safety or public health. I think that's two of the major things we have to consider. But yet at the same time, I hate seeing ordinance that duplicate each other. Whether it be an outside or an inside, I hate for them to take this ordinance and say, well, we're only going to take care of this most. Then you have to have somebody else to say, okay, now if you take care of the outside, I'll take care of the inside. See what I'm trying to say? I think that we need to take and sit down and see exactly what both these ordinance do or say and where we can compare both of them together. And not have to take and say 10 years from now, wait a minute, if that's fine now, we have to redo this. Let's get it right the first time and where we don't have to back and do it all.
Time evolves, Mike.
I know that, I know that.
Things change every day. So you can't set an ordinance and think it's explained from 1960.
Just like right here.
But I think we're just trying to decide if we want to even discuss it. We can compare A and B to see if either one of them exists. Maybe we have to write a C that falls under what we all think is acceptable.
So any further discussion?
So I think this is a simple thing, but I think as a clarification, maybe it wouldn't hurt for us to go look at a couple houses and see what we're talking about, okay? Everybody talks about they don't want to do this, they don't want to do that, they want to do that. I just really understand what we're going to do. That's all I'm saying. I'm for going and looking at somebody's bad ass and saying, okay, what do you think about this guy? I mean, you know, I know I'm at this spectrum because I think everything should be fixed up. But I think we need to know what we're talking about. You can talk about and read all this stuff, but if you don't know what we're talking about. I think we need to see it. That's my opinion. I think it helps us clarify.
Would it be helpful if I had, if like the building commissioner from Frankfurt was available to come up and talk about how they do enforcement of property maintenance and what all it covers, at least down there? Would that be helpful to the council?
That information would help, I think, since we don't have.
I'll reach out to him. I don't know, I don't think they have their names the first time. I'll reach out to him. Any other discussion on proposed ordinance?
The only other item I had. The house number thing, I think you can find that somewhere on the APC books or somewhere. You can enforce that now. I think that is code counted by for the EMS, emergency medical system, isn't it? I think you can enforce that and start that now. Every house has to have a number on it, so it's on a budget to be, because I was doing that with rentals. How what I had to do to meet the compliance for the few years ago.
Is that in the county zoning or city zoning?
It's countywide for the EMS, the EMS and the police departments, right?
It's state.
State.
It's part of the number line.
So I think you can start sending letters out to people. That is one of the important things that I agree in our potential, we need to be done. If nothing else, we can probably get some people up together if we're not on the house and people don't want to do it. People want to get out something and take care of it. We need that for the police department, correct?
Do you see me that?
Or Rob?
I'll look up the state, you know, I'm wanting to know if that's probably easy. You see good.
I know when they put it out last time around, they signed it too. And see, when you build a new house, they won't sign off on the completion certificate till the number arrives. Because I went to get one and the guy called back and he says, it's up. Soon as you get the numbers up, I'll give you your occupancy permit or not give you until the number's up for a new house. And that would suit the area plan.
The other item for discussion, so I've been contacted by the Mears family a couple of times. Who would like to enlarge the cemetery out on 300 North? I included some emails, City Attorney Martin. I don't know a ton about municipal cemeteries. I don't know the last time somebody was buried in one of our cemeteries. A long time ago?
It's quite, it's.
I think there's three or four.
Really?
Yes. Three months out there.
So I really don't know. I'm a city cemetery. But they had requested for the cemetery to be enlarged. I know the Mears own a budding property. Really, it's, I just want to bring it up and see if the council would entertain it. If so, I can get City Attorney Martin to contact the Mears family and try to figure it out.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to comment on it. I talked to Mr. George Mears, or he talked to me, brother. And he said he'd like to see the city maybe buy five acres off his cousin and expand the cemetery so that they can be buried there. And I said, well, why not have your cousin donate five acres to the city? And then you can buy plots in there. I mean, you know, why are you asking the tack writers to take and buy the lands? And then, you know, that don't make sense to me. And I, and I, and I talked to him probably twice about that. He approached me about it. And I told him, I said, George, please, if you want to be buried in that cemetery, which is full now. I said, have your cousin donate five acres and then you can do what you want. But wrong, donate it to the city. You know, I don't know, just make more work for Aaron or whoever had the moment, though, you know.
A couple of few years back, asking the same thing.
Yeah, yeah.
I was going to say, we can give you a little information. 2010, Sherry Mears wanted to give you land out there. Sherry Mears owned the land. Sherry Mears wanted to give you land with the stipulation that a certain section would be plotted off for the Mears family. At that particular time, we did not act upon it. Down the road, Sherry's children said, no, we won't give it to you. Sell it to you. I think this was in very late 2012 or early 13. We will give it to you, but we will sell it to you reasonably, again with the stipulation that you take a certain section and commit it for the Mears family. And the reason they're telling you to do this, at this point in time, the city's responsible for the city's cemetery. And in this old book is the original plot book of the city cemetery. This is how it was laid out. Every space out of that cemetery is hopefully identified. The problem is, over the years, it wasn't. People took family members out and buried them. But at this time, if you look, there is really no safe lot spaces to be sold in this section that we own. You can take, there's quite a few spaces that are identified. And a funeral home can take a probe out there. If there was a vault, something solid, you know. But you could sell the space and then as they start pulling, pulling the dirt up to bury it, you can get into a gray space because not all families registered with the city. There is a set of records, what we could find at the city building that had never been put together. And Carl Abbott can tell you, after I came here in 2010, we went back and found as many of the burial requests from the funeral homes and put them alphabetical. We went back to everything we could find as far as purchasing, which here. If you come into me tomorrow, I want to take a chance on buying a space out there. You can buy a space at that cemetery still for $8 a space. So these are the records that we have, even to the fact where some families have transferred to other family members and it goes on and on. But this has all been put together, but technically they're unsafe to really sell any vacant, any vacant space that is out there anyway. Nor do you want to sell it for $8 a space anyway. And then that means the rest of the lifetime, you take care of that cemetery. Carl Abbott came to a meeting and approached the council and explained to you what you should do, which is recommendation to charge $250 a space. And then that would help towards the maintenance of that cemetery as you increased it. And if you remember, Barb Humphrey came to you with a plan for that piece of land that you're talking about now, that is in between the cemetery going back towards Sherry Mears's home. So that's the section of land that you're talking about.
You're not right, though. When my grandfather, grandmother mowed out there, that same cemetery, back in the 50s. And anyway, most cemeteries charge between $200, $100 or more.
Can we contact the Mears family and have them make us a, give us a couple options of what they would like to see?
That's the council would like to proceed in that fashion?
I think that makes the most sense, but, you know.
So are they thinking that they would just go ahead and buy plots, just like, you know, that's what they're saying to you?
They will sell that land to you at a reasonable price, but they want this section marked off for the Mears family.
I've talked to them, they said a couple different things. Possibility they would.
That looks what it comes.
Well, exactly. They don't need the land so long as they had a certain number of plots.
That's what Sherry wanted you to do.
It's different, depends on which one you talk to. That's how the council wishes to proceed?
Which year would the council like to contact?
I think, is it John?
Yeah, John, Andrew Kendricks' brother.
Any objections to that? Thank you. That's all I had for the agenda tonight. Council comments and requests. President Pro Tem Suh? Councilman Shotley?
No.
Councilman Gerson? Councilwoman Pearson? Councilman Church? Representative Alridge? Public comment?
Yes, sir.
One last thing to throw to everybody, sadly, water seems like that nobody agrees with my opinion and anybody else's on the water situation. But did you read the paper about Walcott last week? Walcott's got a business coming into town, they can't supply water. Really, then, Rimmick is offered to bring water down to them, half the waters they're both supplying. Rimmick supplied part of Walcott's, by part of it. Like Mr. Suh was trying to get Florida's by part of the package, so we wouldn't have to do $15 million to do different things. And their sewer, they're going to expand the sewer in Walcott. They're going to take it and go borrow the money and spend it, go pay for the payment of the Tiff district money that's generated from that business. Now, this sounds pretty simple to me. Why are we paying $14,000, $500 rate payers when their management figured out how to do it and not raise rates at Walcott? Maybe we are too confident, people see how they're going to do it. Maybe it's a smaller scale, maybe it doesn't amount to anything. But we need to figure out how to pay for the second part, the same with grants or like that. Take, they take a tenth money and pay for the improvements. It's generated from a new business coming. Now, that makes sense to me. We need to investigate some of this really hard. You already impacted this community, this rate increase, we don't need a second.